May I have to take it to America and to the Republic for what you're saying?
Beerstead.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Morrisette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odean.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Okay, next to approval of minutes from the January 25 meeting. I move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next to approval of bills with Mr. Beerstead.
Mayor Council, I move approval of payment of bills in the amount of $2,823,921.65, subject to the controller.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, public comments, if there's anybody in the audience like to stand up and talk about something, now would be the time. Okay, nobody in the audience for that, we'll move on. We have a couple council members that wanted to talk a little bit about providing masks for public, and I think Scott wanted to, Scott, did you want to say something before we started this? Are we okay just to go on?
Um, I can just update the council, I, there were, a few of you contacted me regarding a request related to providing masks to the public. We've provided some updates since we talked, or since we put the agenda out. Pierce County Health has made available masks at their location in River Falls and Ellsworth, and they also provided these masks, the, there's two masks in a, in a, they're sealed in a package. We have those at City Hall for distribution. We also had the opportunity to talk to public health directors, helped us find some resources. We may be able to procure some masks without, without costs, so that's some things we're still pursuing, but I guess the question would be, at this time staff hasn't, is not pursuing kind of mask purchase and distribution of masks. We've reached out to the Housing Authority based on a couple council members asking me to do that, and we think that masks are relatively available, and we've got some, quite a few at City Hall still. I think they're going a little bit faster at the Public Health Office than they are at City Hall, so I guess that's the update, and we'd be looking if council wanted to do something different.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any comments on this? Yep?
Uh, I've got several comments on this. The first thing I think that I'd like to note is that this is not the city talking about mandating masks, this is not myself, or as far as I know, any other council, talking about mandating masks. Second, we have to recognize that the current wave of Omicron is decreasing, we are seeing less cases every day. Despite that, there are still well over 2,500 dead Americans every day currently from this pandemic, and hundreds of thousands of people are being infected or re-infected every day. The ongoing plot of these infections is significant. I think we have all seen the impact of workplace shortages, of people not being able to work, of the movement's end, of the lack of workers, and that's not even to mention the human costs that many of us are aware of, that families and people in our cities have to work due to the pandemic.
Oh, my bad. Was, uh, do I need to repeat that, or was any of that audible?
It wasn't on tape.
Wasn't on tape, I'm gonna go back to the beginning. Apologize to the people that have already heard this. First note is that the council is not here, with this proposal as far as I'm aware, to mandate masks, and I am not seeking to mandate masks or to require people to wear them. The second thing to note is that the Omicron wave that we are currently experiencing is decreasing. Despite that, over 2,500 Americans are dying from this every day currently, and hundreds of thousands of more people are being infected. We will still have significant costs after today, even though they are less than what we are facing in the prior weeks. And I think we're all aware of the costs that people in our community have had, from losing work, from employers not being able to find people to work, to the human costs, people's health and lives have been lost to this pandemic. The third point to note is that most people do not have extensive experience in personal protective equipment, or what's called PPE, for airborne contagion. It's really a very specialized area of knowledge. We have had a rapid introduction over the last two years, I am sure much more than any of us would like to have. But, due to supply limitations over the past several years, we have not had widespread availability and information about what is essentially the gold standard for personal protective equipment, NIOSH-certified N95s. What we know about NIOSH-certified N95s is that they can reduce exposure and risk of infection from airborne pathogens. And I would like to note that this is not specific to Omicron. Humanity in the past and humanity in the future will very, very likely face future viral pandemics, unless we find another way to create a legion of species before that. NIOSH certification provides evidence of testing of a product, and as an officially regulated US government standard, holds criminal penalties for people that would falsify that certification, so that NIOSH-certified N95 actually means something. And, N95s are not a one-size-fits-all solution. I have with me a number of different N95s, made by 3M and Honeywell, and each one of these N95s will fit people differently. Some that fit one person would not fit another, some will fit people better than others, some may be more comfortable than others, but people don't have the extensive experience in identifying for themselves which product is best for them. It is my belief that by providing, by helping to bridge that gap in knowledge between what is out there and what people can self-identify for themselves as a quality product, can assist people with returning to work and in protecting our fut, uh, community from future contagion and potential pandemic disruptions. See if I had any other notes I wanted to include on this. Oh, yes, the last problem that I'd like to note on this is that I think we've all learned some lessons, again, more than any of us would like over the last two years, about supply chain disruptions. And in certain things, supply chain disruptions can be inconvenient. Running out of toilet paper probably won't kill you, probably won't shut down major sectors of the economy, but there are other items that are somewhat critical for our society to function properly, and it behooves us to make sure that those products are available domestically outside of supply chain disruptions that can be caused by the proverbial four horsemen. And I look at this as a national defense issue. This pandemic, for us, has been a 900,000 dead Americans so far lesson in that we need to do better in the future, we're something else to come along so that our civilization can survive. These can be things that are naturally occurring, they can be the result of bioweapons or terrorism from other activities, but we need to be prepared, in my opinion, the best way to do that is to provide a sample of N95s to residents that are interested, so they can identify what fits and is comfortable for them, and then procure those in the market.
Okay, anybody else have anything to say on this? Yep?
So, Mr. Simpson, when I had contacted the city, I was made aware that you had contacted AZ Snyder from Pierce County, and it sounds like they have a plan to give us some masks, from what I'm seeing in the packet, and those are N95s, correct?
The masks we have currently are these here, so they're, they are a KN95, so they're 3Ms 9542.
Okay.
They do have some of the Honeywell certified H190 masks also, so those are more, those are the, I believe those are the Nosh N95s. These are not, these are KN95s.
And from my understanding, the city will also be a location that people can pick them up, not just on Wausau.
We are currently a place for picking up what they're distributing, which are these 2KN95 masks.
So if a person was to come into City Hall and to the front area here, they could request how many?
We've been giving out two to each person that asks, requests them.
Okay, good. So what would happen if our city ran out of 200 and Pierce County also didn't have any?
Our understanding is Pierce County doesn't have a supply issue, they can reorder, restock from the Wisconsin Stockpile.
Okay. Well, if they did, I would hope the city would be willing to step in and play that role, but it sounds like that they are responsibly handling it. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yeah, I think that's an assessment of the situation that you can make. So we, we are offered our assistance as Pierce County believes it's best to get masks distributed, so to the extent that they think City Hall is a good distribution place, we're happy to do that. I, like I said, I think they're having, they're going through a lot higher volume at the Wausau Lane office than we are at City Hall.
Right.
So people are seeking them out, seem to be, appear to be seeking them out, but if you go to the Pierce County office, you're also gonna get somebody knowledgeable that can tell you how to fit them, use them, and others, but City Hall is just a distribution point.
So, for me, you answered my first part of my questions, and I think that's a pretty responsible way of doing it. The other thing I was concerned about was, and I know you'll never hear this much on TV or anything, but the, uh, the long-term effects of COVID are crippling to people, whether it's blood bursting vessels, among other, you know, severe fatigue that lasts for life, these type of things are not anything to laugh about, and they're gonna be more prevalent than just the number of people dying. People's quality of life will be changed forever, so this is something that we need to make sure that we have plans for, the people who are most vulnerable in our community, and a lot of which, people who are the most vulnerable live in public housing, such as our Housing Authority. So, when I read the packet, I saw the phrase that people would have to make a request for N95 in our public housing, but how do they know they're supposed to make a request for it? Is that posted in, within all the Housing Authority buildings?
I don't, I don't believe the Housing Authority is looking at their role as a provider differently than other multifamily or apartment providers in the community, meaning I don't believe that they're taking responsibility for the individual residents having appropriate PPE.
So...
That's the role of public health or the individual to do so.
So with the city's direction, could we essentially post something where they can request that the cities, you know, request one where we could have one of our city staff essentially drop a box or a number down for Public House, Housing Authority building? Because to me, it makes a lot of sense, because of the way the virus works, it ping-pongs off people, especially the most vulnerable. If you're in healthcare, I've been in healthcare 16 years, I can tell you this is the most remarkably contagious thing that a country's probably ever faced, and because of the uniqueness of people with underlying conditions, they're, they're sitting ducks in buildings, and those are the buildings that we need to look out for, and that's part of the responsibility a community has for the people who are vulnerable. So, a simple, maybe we bring a box down, or maybe put a number that they can call and then just drop them off as needed, something like that, I think that our staff are capable of doing that, would you agree?
I would agree, we are, as a result of the informa, the request by council members, I suspect that we will be able to get some free masks to the Housing Authority, understanding they haven't requested any or indicated a concern about that, and that we, my, again, my recommendation, as well intentioned as the council may be, is that we continue to let public health take the lead in directing our actions around our activities, including potential distribution or not distribution, or what masks to distribute, or how to distribute them. That's, that our stance as staff is that we think that's, we appreciate the concern, and we've related to public health, and they've provided us alternatives, options, and other things we can pursue if the council would like to, I'm not proposing that we do any specific actions at this time.
So are we gonna be able to put like just a, a paper up in the, in our Housing Authority building, so people can, you know, call the city and have the city staff drop off a certain amount or so?
I, I'm not proposing doing that.
Okay, because I think that's probably worth our time to bring down the, uh, the amount of people who are in our hospitals right now, which is at a breaking point. I think it's a mistake to ignore the health risk in our community, and a simple, this wouldn't even cost much money, this is a very simple thing we can do as responsible people at allowing our place, because we are a medical hub in the state. That would improve things for everybody, it's a very simple action we can do, it's not gonna cost us any money, it's gonna be very, it could be very forward, we just give a little direction to our staff. I don't believe that Pierce County's officer is looking at her role as the city council, that's, this is our jurisdiction when it comes to Housing Authority, we need to be responsible for that. So that's the direction I'd like to see happen, that we help those who are most vulnerable and where it would ping pong the most. And we already have the masks to do it, we just need to communicate and put this together from step one to step two to step three, and execute best for our community. So I don't know if I need a motion, but I would make a motion that we communicate effectively with public housing, so people know that they have the ability to request a mask, who might not be able to get one otherwise, because they are the most vulnerable in our communities.
How many masks should we provide to people in public housing in your proposal?
Well, I, I think it was...
We should either second his motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Second, uh, second the motion by air, thank you Scott.
Did, did we not talk to the Housing Authority already about this?
As I believe I've stated, that we've been in communication with public health and the Housing Authority, and I understand that there's provisions made between public health and the Housing Authority to provide whatever might be needed at the Housing Authority. So I, that's why we are not proposing as staff that we take any direct role in the, that distributing, or setting rules, or picking numbers, or establishing what masks to give, because we think, we brought the concern to public health and believe that they're adequately equipped to deal with it.
I'm fine with the masks the county is providing, I just don't believe that they're effectively communicating, because I have yet to hear from any of my constituents that they were made available to them. But, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor? If I may?
Diane?
Um, yes, as parliamentarian, this is not on our agenda for this evening, so I, I don't think we can take any, uh, action on this, so I would move to table the...
I think we have the leeway to make a motion on this, if I, am I right Scott? If, if council member would like to make a motion on this, we have the leeway to do that? Or Chris?
I think you have some ability under the agenda's item, to the extent that you can vary from the request to provide masks to the public, I think provide, you know, if you were to direct us to provide masks to the Housing Authority, I think that's within that number two on the agenda. There is also a notice on the agenda that says, um...
Yeah.
You know, that, uh, let's see if I can find it. No, official action may be taken on any agenda item, so, I mean, that'd be a determination by the parliamentarian, the city attorney, the mayor, whether or not you think the motion is within, within order on the agenda, but I think
Yeah.
It's reasonably close.
Chris, your opinion?
You're heard here, if you can hear me, everyone.
Can't, can't hear you. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
That's nice.
Chris, thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I guess we can...
What Scott said.
Yep, what Scott said. So we got a first and a second. Questions or comment on that?
Um, you asked about the amount of masks, I would say, too, like Mr. Simpson was talking about, makes sense to me.
Start him off with two boxes, you said?
Well, no, two per person if they request them.
If they request them?
Just like we're treating everybody else, we want the same opportunity for everybody, that's all I'm asking for.
So let me, let me just ask a clarifying question here, are you saying that the city should provide boxes to the Housing Authority if they request it?
I'm saying that the city should communicate that it has masks and let people request them through the city, where the city would drop it off.
Just put a note up on their bulletin board that says
Yes.
They're available here at the city if you would like them.
And, but the city would have somebody go take them over, or they'd have the county do it, they'd figure out between the two of them. I prefer if the city did it, because I know the answer to us, I don't know how the county does things.
And if they do get a lot of requests, the county said that they can get masks over to the Housing Authority if they need it. So what we would be doing is just putting up a note that says...
We're communicating it effectively.
Call, call the Housing Authority if you need masks.
Yeah.
Because they have them available.
Yep.
Okay.
I, I think the, the only question I've got...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The only question I've got, or the only, the only point I'd make is, is consistency, we've got other, we've got other vulnerable populations in town, Comfort's Home, Wellhaven, just, two of them come to mind, we're not talking about doing that for them, I, I'm, the Housing Authority, our ability to, um, I don't wanna say dictate, because that's not the right word, but, um, you know, mandate things with them is, is not as strong as I once thought, uh, in talking with Assistant City Administrator Stroud this afternoon. I, I think, I think, I want everybody in town who wants a mask to have access to them. My concern is that we be consistent across the board, and I'm also concerned, as Mr. Plunkett pointed out, if they get a mask and it doesn't fit them, it isn't doing them a lot of good, so the housing, or the, um, I'm sorry, the Health Department, if you go there, will help you get fitted for the right mask, which is what we ultimately want. I don't have a problem with getting masks to these, to these folks, I just wanna see us be consistent across the board, because again, I wanna, if you want a mask, we should facilitate some means of getting you a mask, or providing you a mask, or providing you an access point to a mask. I guess that's my only point, is, let's be consistent.
I'm willing, if you wanna make an amendment after we vote on this, I mean, or we could make another one that would have, uh, anything that would have, how do I put this? Multi-residential complexes in that sense, where it is, uh, public or private, where it's close quarters like we're describing.
I, I kinda move with the opinion that I think we can just direct staff without a motion and tell them what we want. I mean, like, is that, Diane, do you, are you in a, Ms. Odean, are you in agreement as part of parliamentarian that we can, we can just tell, we can tell staff that at this direction, we want you to provide masks to anybody who wants them, period?
It's not, it's not exactly a parliamentary question, but yes, we certainly have the, the authority to direct staff.
She said yes. We do have the ability to direct staff.
Yeah, Mr. Plunkett said.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's some real valid points here, uh, there's also some information that I think, um, we need to look more closely at. The masks that public health are distributing, one is the DF190, the Honeywell. 8910 is the Honeywell. And that one's an actual NIOSH-certified N95. The other one that they're distributing is not an NIOSH-certified N95. It is a 3M product, and I've got some tape in 3M products, I've got four sitting there. That said, it's a 3M product that is not approved for sale in the United States, it was only imported under emergency use authorization at the beginning of the pandemic, and is not something that residents would be able to secure themselves. So if our goal is to ensure that residents can, at the very least, identify the mask that fits them, that is available currently in the domestic market, from legitimate distributors through the 3M and Honeywell website, every one of these masks is currently available for less than a dollar a piece, actually this one's a buck and a quarter, uh, through the 3M website program. So, I don't think that the only option that we give people being a DF190 and saying, hey, if that one fits you, great, if it doesn't, you know, you're back on your own, I really think that the five-dollar investment, five and a quarter if you give people five different ones to try, per resident, uh, has the potential for a return in terms of lives, health, and economic activity savings to be astronomical, in terms of the ROI that we're looking at as far as public spending. The cost of doing that for one mask each to a thousand interested parties would be $5,250, probably don't even have to pay tax because we're buying it from the city. And I think, in my opinion, we need to stop neglecting personal protective equipment and treat it as the proverbial redheaded stepchild of public health measures, and unfortunately, in my view, that is what has happened here, and it's come at a cost of lives and pleasure. I think we can do better with that, two masks, only one of which is actually available on the domestic market, unless we intend to provide an unlimited supply to people. And I, I think that in some ways we have to depend upon the free market, but to do that, we have to get people products that are available currently in the free market. Fifty percent of the ones that public health is giving away are not.
So we have a first and a second on Mr. Downing's...
Yeah, I'd like to have to include the language that, that council member Morrisette and I were describing about when I talked about being more inclusive, I was looking at just the relationship with Jason Stroud in our public housing, but I'd like to expand that.
So, so what, I need, I need to understand what I'm voting on, it's just a lot of...
Maybe we should just look at just giving direction and agree on the direction.
I would prefer that, I don't think we need a resolution or a motion.
So, we understand that the Pierce County Health Board, our Health Board, is giving out the masks, we're got, they can get them here, at River Falls, City Hall, they can go to Wausau Lane and get them there, they can help fit them there, right?
Yeah, in addition, again, to clarify what will happen with no further direction, we also have made ourselves available to public health, to the extent that they feel is helpful to distribute further masks or other things to the community, we've already advertised through our channels their distribution of masks, and we would plan to continue to do that as part of our partnership with them. What staff is suggesting respectfully is... What staff is suggesting respectfully is that unless you have specific direction you think is vital to the successful distribution of masks above what public health is recommending, we think they have it covered, that, that there will be adequate supply, it will be widely distributed. There's additional things coming from the federal government through private providers, Walgreens and others, which I don't believe are here yet in River Falls, but, um, those, those supplies are being made available. So if the council, the council certainly has a prerogative, if they think it's vitally important to policy, you know, to, you can prescribe what kind of masks, how we do it, how we get them to people. I'm suggesting that, in our conversations with public health, we think that they are doing an, more than adequate job of, they saw kind of a, a gap in the short term because of the federal distribution problems and our Walgreens getting them versus other Walgreens, and so they're, at this time, these are the masks they have, these are what they're distributing. That doesn't mean they won't have other masks, it doesn't mean they won't do different strategies. I'm just trying to describe what's happening now, and we've relied on public health to this point, and we feel that they can be relied on going further, understanding that if council, you're not necessarily editorializing that, you don't feel that way if you want to prescribe something differently. But I, I'm not sure you have to, it sounds like, at least in what Mr. Downing is suggesting, you probably don't need to provide us any further direction for what he's hoping will occur, will occur.
It's the communication aspect I'm looking at.
But you certainly, but the council certainly has the prerogative to say they're not comfortable with hoping or feeling that that might occur, that they want to give us more direction to make sure it happens in a certain way. I, I would just suggest, I think, we're probably headed in the direction that most of you have indicated, we are, I don't believe we're headed in the direction of five masks of a specific type to-
Okay, so we still have a first, we still have a motion on the table. Do you want to rescind the motion in the second?
I want to rescind the motion and just do what we've talked about.
So you just want to give some direction?
Yes, give some, some direction.
So what direction do you want to give them besides what they're already doing?
Put up, put up something that actually states what we're doing for the first half of the house, uh, masks, buildings, buildings, places where, put it somewhere in the home, obviously, places where there's, they put your mind in them.
All right, going back, and I try to repeat some of that.
Are you, are you okay with us calling the housing authority and asking them to put something up?
If, if they're willing to do it, that, and do that, that's fine, otherwise, if the city can do something for them, if they can't, that'd be the other way of doing it.
Jason, you've dealt with the housing authority, talking to them, would that be something that would be okay? If we could call them and say, hey, could you just put a note up? I don't know if they need anything, they either call you guys, the housing authority, or call the city hall and we can get, we can get to the housing authority mask.
Yes. Yeah, and when they come in the building, and same with the Comfort's Home and other locations where it makes a lot of sense to have them, so.
Okay.
I, I see this as, frankly, being next to useless.
Well, then-
What has changed in between last, was it August or September, when Director AZ Snyder came before the council and told us that they were, N95s were unavailable, unnecessary, uncomfortable, and did not work with our professional fit testing? What has changed between then and now, where now AZ is telling us a different story? Do I believe AZ then, or do I believe AZ now? Or do I recognize that quite potentially, the people in public health have neglected personal, personal protective equipment this whole time, and that has cost lives and money in our-
Mr. Mayor, can we call the question?
Well, there's no question to call.
No question to call.
That, but that same point, are, are you going to make a motion or something, or do you want to direct council, do you, staff or?
Oh, you, but my request for staff is that, at the very least, we procure enough for a thousand individuals to get five masks each, that is of our ARPA fund, that is a third of a percent, one-third of one percent, not even asking one percent for ours here, asking a third of a percent for health, of our ARPA funds, that we distribute to residents, and then residents have things that are available in the domestic market that they can find for themselves what to get.
Did you want to say something?
I, I can, I can address this. I, I strongly disagree with your characterization of the public health role historically and going forward. Um, they've been nothing but a partner. To answer your question, what's changed since August, what hasn't changed since August? I mean, we have, we are flooded with new information about a number of factors. I, I don't question her advice to us, I don't believe that, that, I, I don't have a concern about, uh, some, some, uh, bad advice or changing focus that's put the public health in peril. I think our experience with public health is that they've done everything they, they believe is prudent to, to protect public health and provided us consistent good advice as, as they've been able to. I, I, I don't believe, Mr. Plunkett, I think it's completely irrational to blame public health in Pierce County for 900,000 masks. I, I just, and I think it sets the wrong message to the community about the role public health has played, and, and I've been cautious about, you know, pushing back on the council, I, respectfully, I just, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a very good approach to take as a, as a leader of the community. Public health has provided us consistent advice. Three of you had asked me about distributing masks, we went to advice for public health. They provided options that I think, um, adequately provide, um, the spirit of what you're asking for, understanding that individual council members might like to dictate certain things. I think it's a mistake to start allocating ARPA funds without understanding what the reporting requirements are, the impacts that are going to be on that, I think that's a bigger discussion for us. If you want us to distribute a thousand masks, you certainly have the prerogative to do so. I would, I caution you to dictate the funding source, I think staff is perfectly capable to come up with funding if that's what, what you choose to do.
I see you're correct about that point, Chris.
So, so respectfully, we sincerely as staff are happy to implement direction from the council. You can ignore our advice, you can modify our advice, you have, have the prerogative to do so. I, I would suggest that the folks in the community that are best equipped to help the community with masks are, are doing so, um, and, and that people that are seeking these masks are able to find them, and we're, we're doing what we can. Um, that doesn't mean we're doing everything we can, there, there certainly might be other things we can do. We'll gladly take advice about how to do that, but, um, we're happy also to just take advice that the council would like us to make sure that we're communicating clearly, make sure that we broadly help people get these, these tools that are available to them.
Okay. So you got, you got, that, we gave you the, the direction for that, make sure the communication is there. Mr. Plunkett made, wants to make a recommendation about five masks each are spending money. Any other council members interested in that, that recommendation to council, or to staff? Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda then. First thing on the consent agenda is change of agent for Holiday Station Store number eight. Uh, next one is a resolution approving appointment of the city engineer. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number three. Change of agent.
Okay. Anything else? I'll take a motion on number five then. Or I'm sorry, number four. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution approving appointment of city engineer.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Post? Okay, Mr. Morrisat, you pulled number four.
Uh, I'd like to ask the agent, my, actually, to come forward and, and reaffirm her previous statements about when she was an agent, so, Ms. Turnus, if you wouldn't mind. Recognizing that you were a private, prior agent for the same location, uh, when you were an agent, I asked you those same three questions, I'll just run through them real quickly, if you can just, uh, reply, reply to, to your consent of those. Uh, do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes, I do.
Do you understand, uh, the, that if you're, uh, if there's an alcohol-related violation and you are, even if you're not present, you are responsible?
Yes, I do.
And have you completed your responsible service, uh, certificate or program?
Yeah, I did.
All right, thank you very much, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I will make a motion that we accept the change of agent for Holiday Store number eight.
Second.
First and second, and questions? All in favor? Aye. Post? Okay, next move on to administrator's report. Anybody's got any questions for Scott? Scott, if you've got anything for us.
I just have a few announcements, um, that I'll, I'll mention to the council. I'm sorry to, to share with the council, I think I've shared with you already, but, um, former older person David Reese passed away. He served on the city council, uh, for periods of time between 2009 and 2014, so condolences to, to his wife Susan and the family. Uh, Susan, as many of you know, was the chairperson of our parking rec board for, for several years, so a family that's committed to service of the community, and we're sorry to hear about Dave's passing. This week, there is absentee voting for spring primary election in the clerk's office, that's eight thirty to four thirty PM. Election is February fifteenth, and polls in Wisconsin are open seven AM to eight PM. Um, we'd also like to point, uh, people, it was a little bit warmer today, but I know it's been cold and people have been inside, but the library's got several offerings this month, um, number of events, and you can, uh, visit their, their website, you can either go to riverfallspubliclibrary.org, or you can find it at the RFcity.org website. Uh, the city is hiring. Uh, position descriptions are currently posted on our careers page of the city's webpage, uh, site. Current posted positions are police officer, assistant city engineer, we're looking for seasonal lifeguard swim instructors, and assistant instructors for the rec program, and we are in the process of doing our, um, regular recruitment, which I believe has been about every two years for firefighter volunteers, uh, that posting, the current posting is for already certified firefighters. There isn't a current open recruitment for new firefighters, that'll come up likely after, um, this next round, and then those, that recruitment is usually in cohorts of people who want to go through the training to become a certified firefighter. But if you are already a certified firefighter, this is a new opportunity for you to kind of join, uh, the fire department. So we have discussed it a little bit tonight, uh, the city does have, um, several of the KN95 masks available for the public, you can stop at the customer service desk to receive those, uh, as well as, public health has those at their office in River Falls and Ellsworth for people, um, and if you go to the Pierce County Health Office, they do have assistance in seeing if the ma- mask is a good fit for you. Be able to take any other questions you might have.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Uh, I got a couple appointments I'd like to make. I'd like to reappoint Mark Anderson to the Historic Preservation Commission through January of 2025, and I want, like to reappoint Dick Reinhardt to the Police and Fire Commission through April of 2027.
I move a protocol to the mayor's appointments.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Post?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye. Post? We are adjourned.
Can you get that email from Lindsey who was interested in the-
I did, I got it, of course, I got it a week after, oh, I know-